I'd like to call the order of the Dallas work session agenda for Monday, September 18th, 2023, six o'clock. Secretary, recall the rule, please.
Counselor President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Collins?
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jantsch?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselors Beriantos and Burden are excused.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I can hear it.
Does that mean we have to?
Yes, you saw that. Kim can turn the volume up and down to try to reduce that noise.
Next thing is development code discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the development code update project. As talked about last time with our planner, Chase Blue, we broke down the eight items that you, as a council, identified as issues that you wanted to further discuss when we brought the full package to you in a work session earlier this summer. The last meeting, we got through temporary signs and then right-of-way and cottage cluster developments. Today, we're going to tackle multi-use path widths and walkway widths and the criteria for walkway width. So I'll invite Chase Blue, our planner, up, who has a presentation, and then follow that with discussion, question and answers.
Not so much a presentation, so much as slides to look at as the council has their discussion, but yes. So Chase Blue's a planner. So the first section that we'll be tackling is multi-use trail width. This is where trails are called for in the development code. The current language, which is in the code, is for bike head connections to be six to 12-foot paved with multi-use landscaping, including 20 feet of right-of-way. Six to 12 is a pretty substantial range in terms of size and one of the requirements that we're trying to abide by under state laws for code language to be clear and objective. So is it six? Is it 12? Is it somewhere in between? That's not really clear or objective. So we're proposing some new code language, essentially splitting this into two separate categories. This would be one category for our creek trails, which would be a minimum of 12-foot paved width with landscaping and a minimum of 20-foot right-of-way. And then a separate category for mid-block accessways. These would be accessways where you have long blocks or extending off at the end of the cul-de-sac. Those would be a minimum of six-foot wide width in a 10-foot right-of-way, unless, as the footnote there indicates, we can require a wider width where fire apparatus access is necessary. Sometimes that's a requirement of developments. So that's kind of the proposed language that we've got there. The staff report has some examples of, you know, other guidance documents that talk about, you know, trail widths. So there's some graphics there on that. As far as the question of where did the 12-foot number came from, that actually came from the original document. Again, it was a six to 12-foot, so keeping the load number for the mid-block accessways and just taking the higher number for the creek trails is kind of where that number came from. But certainly if the council wants to have some discussion on that, certainly happy to hear what y'all have to say and provide what input I can.
For definitional purposes, a mid-block accessway is something that punches through the middle of the block?
Yes.
So before you maybe jump into the discussion, one other aspect that Chase identified in the staff report, if you didn't read it, was to, there were not, there's no inconsistencies between our planning documents, like our comprehensive plan, our transportation system plan, and our parks master plan. It identifies having, you know, Rickrell Creek Trail and other trails. It talks about mid-block accessways, but it doesn't define the width of what those should be in those more broad planning documents. And so the place where we have it is in our development code. And so there's not really great guidance in those other documents for widths, just that you should have them. And so as you have the discussion tonight, it's really, what's the width that you want? Six to 12, like Chase said, is what's in the code today. It needs to be just a solid number, whatever that number is, you know, six feet, eight feet, 10 feet, 12 feet, something in between. And that's the discussion that you have to have as a council to give us the direction.
Chase, I do have a question. On the 12-foot or 14-foot trails, they're probably designed for two-way traffic. Are there, is there a requirement to have a center lane stripe painted?
Usually the guidance documents talk about having a center lane marking when you have either higher speeds of users or if you have higher volumes of users. So certainly that could be something that's considered in those circumstances, but that's more of an operational concern than a, you know, you shall construct kind of concern.
See, I wouldn't think you want to do that on a six or eight-foot trail, but on 12 or 14, maybe so.
Well, the narrower trails might actually be where you would want to delineate that separation, especially if you have, you know, blind corners. Try and keep people from colliding head-on.
And bicycles.
Yeah. That's where, you know, if you have a higher number of bicycles as opposed to pedestrians, that that can be a concern if you have that higher, you know, speed of traffic.
Chase, I have a question.
High speed, of course, being relative when you're talking about bicycles, but...
Certainly do with width, but with the, when the city might require access of apparatus, do we have any specifications on the thickness?
So the language that's in the code relates to the load-bearing capacity for the fire apparatus.
That's in fire code, yeah.
I believe it's 60,000 pounds, something thereabouts. Yeah.
But that, yeah, that would be, that would not be covered with the load code. That would be covered with fire code.
Yeah, the number in my mind is 50,000. I think it's 50,000 pounds, 50, 60, somewhere in there.
Will, requiring a path, if the code says 12, will that impede our ability to complete the creek trail development anywhere?
No. So to the extent that projects being done by the city have been planning for either 10 or 12-foot, depending on, you know, particular geographic constraints, sometimes there's utility poles, you have to kind of snake around. But we have been planning for that sort of standard width kind of throughout our processes, so it wouldn't necessarily impede the ability to complete it. And if there was an area where you couldn't fit a trail of that width through, certainly there's options for having a slightly narrower section for a distance.
Okay.
Again, if you have utility poles or buildings or whatever that you're trying to avoid.
Well, how are exceptions like that for where it has to be narrower for some physical reason? How are exceptions like that handled? Because this language sounds pretty hard-coded and absolute.
Well, and that's the trick with having a language that has to be clear and objective is either you identify in advance what the exceptions are, you spell them out.
Or you put in a clause that says, "We can decide exceptions on the fly because we do that in other things."
Well, this would be subject to varying.
Yeah, Chase.
Right, so you have the variance procedure.
Variances are allowed, right?
Yep.
So, and the city, just like a developer, when they're developing land, has to abide by the code requirements. And so we would go through a variance process. City would be the applicant and the planning commission would be the decision maker.
Wait, are you saying we have to abide by our own rules?
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, my gosh.
But only for trails that are identified in the TSP. Any other trails that may be built into a park that aren't part of the TSP wouldn't be subject to these standards.
How wide are our trails now, over there?
So there is a mix-up width. Some are currently 10 feet, some are currently 12 feet, and then there are some segments that are narrower at eight feet, just where you have constraints that it's narrowing around. So kind of in that range is where it currently is.
And so then when you go, I guess there's an easement, like behind people's homes and stuff, you made it wider. There's already an easement.
Well, we own.
Yeah, we own most of the land that Rickrell Creek Trail is on. The subdivision that's just to the south of Sarah's Glen, that portion of the trail would be in an easement because they decided to do an easement as opposed to a dedication of land. Most other sections of the trail, I think, are dedicated land to the city. So it's land that we own.
And where we do have easements, the minimum width of those is 20 feet, as called for by code. Some of them are wider than that, but that's the minimum that we have secured thus far, so.
Okay. And so anything that's more narrow, so I'll say we said, okay, 12 feet is the standard. Anything that's more narrow than that, does that have to be widened or it is what it is?
Yes, it'd be pre-existing development. This would apply to new construction.
And then, of course, there's the 77 feet of concrete.
Yep.
And I asked Brian and Chase at the last meeting, and they, Brian presented it, and I, 80 to 90% is 10 feet right now.
Yeah, I don't know the percentage of it, but the sections of trail that are built, there's the Applegate portion, which is the asphalt portion of the trail. It's kind of like horseshoe shape off of Applegate Drive on the far west side of town. That's 12 feet in width. And all the concrete sections, the section between Ian Tony Park and the City Park, Levens and Main Street, that's a 10-foot section. The section by the dog park, behind the aquatic center and going out further to the east, is also a 10-foot section. So one way of looking at it is if it's concrete, it's likely 10 feet, and the asphalt portion's 12 feet. The lone exception to that is where it's concrete that goes through the Dallas City Park. Most of that is less than, less than 10 feet, especially as you get into the, away from Branville Drive and going more into the interior of the park. It's, it's...
It's why it's one-way.
Right, it's pretty small. It's four, five feet wide. It's not that wide.
Would maintenance, because that's the old, old section, would maintenance then require it to go up to 12, or would we be able to maintain it at the whatever it is?
You can maintain it at the width that it is today. It's just when you're constructing a new section, it would be subject to these standards.
Okay.
My only thing that I have, as far as, I prefer the 10-foot wide path. Pure and simply from, once you go to a 12-foot wide, it feels like a road to me. And 10-foot is narrow enough that it's, I mean, still wide enough. We, I walk the Rickrell Creek Trail all the time. I have no problem with two bicycles. We, I've never had a problem down there with the 10-foot path. I know that cars are, truck tires from outside to outside are less than eight feet wide. Most of them, most full-size trucks are seven feet wide, with the mirrors being at eight feet. So transporting a fire truck, I mean ambulance down on a 10-foot path is not a problem as of April.
No, I see. So looking at the bar, this is the opposite of the law. But as far as I agree with, I know we drove our brush truck on the trail floor, and we need the brush truck on our way to the area.
Ambulance down, yep.
The ambulance, I was like, why does a fire truck need to go?
We had a fire.
Because fires happen.
I mean, you could either reach it from the street or you could reach it.
If you had a fire along the three rail, we would probably ride it somewhere to, I don't know.
Yep.
Larry, so if this applies to new construction, how much of the trail is left of the new, that this applies to?
Good question.
I think we have four or five sections of trail that are left. So I would say about half the trail.
If I had to guesstimate, I'd say we're probably at about 40% completion right now, so.
Maybe five miles?
I wasn't going to ask this, but since Larry brought it up, sort of on the periphery, I will. If sometime in the future, probably when none of us is here, if we get to the point where the legalities have all sorted themselves out, that we can build that little section past Edwardson's property, how wide are we going to have to make that? Is that physically constrained?
That's a loaded question.
I'm trying to defer to legal counsel on that one.
This is purely hypothetical. None of us is going to be here when it happens.
So, I mean, ultimately, the width of the trail will be whatever is specified in code because that is the law.
Unless you need a variance because of physical constraints.
Unless there's a variance that is granted, that's...
So I think you would take that kind of an analysis.
More specific, the trail is about, I think from end to end, it's planned to be four and a half miles or five miles total length. So I think we have about two and a half miles yet to be built. And that's in various segments along the way.
So I just spent the last several days camping in Washington, and we rode our bikes from El Waco, from Cape Disappointment, all the way until Long Beach and back again. And that trail is not 12. There were a couple of moments there where there were people who were not going as fast as I wanted them to go, and I wished it was a little wider, but that's because I'm impatient. But I agree, I don't know, I can't, I'm not, I'm not able to envision why 12 is necessary. Can you help me see what the extra two feet does other than impatient people? And I just wanted to get around her.
So one of the challenges when you have more users, those users require more space, especially if you have small children who may be, you know, kind of wandering about, dogs on leashes, who may be wandering about, roller skaters who need more, you know, that side-to-side kind of space. So as you, as your paths become more popular, you have more of a need for width. Some of the most popular paths in America, they even have separate sections of trail for the bicyclists and for the pedestrians, to try and separate the different needs for space for those different kinds of users. We're not popular enough where we would need that much extra space, but that's kind of where that difference comes from. It's trying to accommodate the volume of users. And so, you know, it may not be that we have the volume of users to warrant that kind of width today, but if this is the trail that we're going to still have 60 years from now, with 60 years from now worth of growth, will we have that volume of users then? That's hard to say. So that's the thing, we're not, we're not replacing this in 10 years, right? It's here for the duration.
Well, the existing language that we're going to replace allows for up to 12. So is this just a matter of, no, more complicated than it was there now, so we kept it in?
I mean, that was probably the easy way to go with writing the code, was it had a number of six to 12, and so six went to the bottom section, 12 went to the top section. And it said up to 12 for a reason, I assume. Maybe that was just an oversight.
Yeah, it's really just a matter of policy from the council. You know, I think the staff were comfortable with whatever you want to do. I would say, in addition to what Chase had said, that, you know, users that are on the trail will feel more comfortable with more space. That's just natural, right? The more space you have, the more comfortable you're going to feel. But to Michael's point, you know, if you get too wide, you start to feel, you know, maybe a little, you know, drowning, you know, in too much space, and it's not as quaint. So, you know, there's, there's, you know, opportunities and challenges both ways. I think the Ash tow standards that Chase talked about, you know, 11-foot really gives, you know, two bicyclists and a pedestrian, you know, enough space to comfortably pass each other, you know, at the same time, even if that happens. I don't think, you know, a 10-foot trail is going to be inconvenient to anyone. I don't think we get complaints very often about how wide our trails are. I think 10-foot works. It's just a matter of policy. And like Chase says, as you grow more as a community, you're going to have more people. As the trail's fully connected, I think the trail will become more popular as a destination, just that alone. And, you know, does 12 feet make sense as we're thinking, you know, beyond today?
I'm glad you said that because I was going to comment that there are, whatever we decide here, when we, when we reach a conclusion, it ought to think at least a little bit about the future. Because we're 18,000 people now. In a few decades, we're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of the size of McMinnville. There are going to be a lot more people out there. And, you know, it's easier to build it wide in the first place than go back and try and make adjustments to something that's been there a long time. So that, I'm not, I'm not saying it has to be 12. I'm saying that should be a factor in whatever we discuss. We should think about not just now, but the future as well.
I don't. I chose it because it was a picture of a trail that was, a lot of people on it.
That's why I'm wondering. I don't know that it really looks well-feet.
They'd certainly have more space if it was.
Like a man, if he was, like, one of those people was to lay down.
Unfortunately, I don't have that information.
I'm just saying, what is our trail for? Is it like a mode of getting across town? Is it like a street? Or is it just a little meandering path where people just want to take a little walk and enjoy the creek or?
I think the answer to your questions are yes. I think the answer to your questions are yes. You know, when it's a fully connected trail, I think people could use it to get, you know, from their home downtown for shopping, working, visiting other people.
What are bike points for?
Same purpose, just in a different, you know, location, different mode, right? Some people are going to feel safer riding a bike on a trail than they do, you know, on a street where there's car conflicts, right? So it just, I think, yes. You know, some people want to be on the trail for the beauty, the scenery, you know, listening to the creek. Other people are going to want it to...
Well, maybe we need a speed limit on there then. Maybe 10 miles an hour. Maybe people shouldn't be going like 50 miles an hour. I know my e-bike can go 25 miles an hour. Should I just go barreling down the, you know?
That was my problem.
I mean, I don't know. You could go 25 on the street and you can go 10 on the bike path. I mean, it has to be safe because you have children on their bikes and you have adults. On the street, you don't have children driving cars and adults, and so we have...
But the speed limit is not a development code question. That would be a traffic control question.
I mean, I just said that.
So, but from, yeah, from, from tonight, it's really, you know, the things, the things that I think you would think about and that Chase has identified are, you know, what's the comfort, what's kind of the purpose, what's the future look like?
Right.
You know, I would, I would say that we're somewhere between 10 feet and 12 feet is what I'm hearing. So what we're looking for is just kind of consensus and on what you want us to bring back to you. We're recommending 12. We think that provides enough space. It looks a little bit more future-thinking than what we have today. No matter if you have, the trail today has conflicts between 10 feet, 12 feet, and narrower when you're inside the city park. So whatever you come up with isn't going to be, like, consistent for the whole trail. So it's just what you want. Do you want 10 feet? Do you want 12 feet?
Make it wider.
I like 12.
You know, 60 years from now, we're all going to be riding electric bikes, so let's make it.
Oh.
How many years? Yeah, thank you for asking that.
In your 15-minute city, yeah.
Again, I will still...
Can we afford the extra?
I will still say that on the maintenance of it and...
Developers pay for it?
We tax the e-bikes.
And then that makes houses more expensive. We tax the e-bikes.
And a lot of the trail segments that are left, we're actively pursuing grants to be able to construct those. So we're doing a lot of design work right now so that we have every section designed, which should make it more competitive, more competitive projects when we go and ask, you know, the state to provide grant funding. You know, we're...
But the developer pays for it and then the city chips in grant money?
The developer can pay for it. Oftentimes, what they will do is dedicate just the land for it. Is that right, Chase?
We've had a number of different ways that it's been done in practice.
So there's not one tried and true method that it gets done, but...
Although, back to your question of, is it transportation, is it recreation? When we apply for ODOT funding, it's transportation. When we apply for Parks Department funding, it's parks.
Do they hold you to that then? So you have to allow it?
There are certain, there are certain standards that are applied when it's, you know, transportation. Like, you can't close a highway at night, right? So you can't close your bike path at night. So there are certain restrictions that come with different funding sources.
Why 12? Just as Chris was saying, she just came from a trail that was under 10 feet wide.
If it's paid for by the Parks Department.
So you have sections that you can't close in sections of the...
Yeah, it's, it's, and it's a huge tourist attraction. I don't know if huge, right? It's El Waco. So huge is definitely not the right word, but it is a tourist attraction. And people do use this for, we didn't take our cars. We drove in, rode in, and did our shopping and our whiskey tasting and then rode back. And it was definitely something that everyone enjoyed, and it was not 12 feet. I did not lay down to see how wide it was.
No, I mean, I was just kind of, I was trying to get an idea. No, I didn't...
That would have been a fun way to test it out. Because, we, no, nobody was, I was the one going fast. I was the one that made it.
No, I mean, lying down, you might have gotten hit.
No. Nobody was going fast enough. I could have rolled out of the way. But it was definitely, and it's, it is definitely an attraction, and it is definitely things that people use. And people bring their bikes to this area to use it. So I don't know that it needs to be 12 feet. I think that 10 consistently, I honestly think that what's more important than width is the scenic, is that it's pretty and well-maintained throughout.
Will it ever go, like, to connect to the one on 99? Will it ever?
There's some aspirational language in the transportation system plan that discusses the possi, or the comprehensive plan that discusses the possibility of eventually forming a continuous trail all the way from the mountain range to the Willamette River. Obviously, that's well beyond our jurisdiction, so...
That would require cooperation of a lot of entities.
Yeah, but I mean, it's something that, you know, that's really kind of future policy decision-making on, you know, when you're looking at your TSP, when you're looking at your Parks Master Plan, you know, incorporating, you know, things like that into those plans would be appropriate. I think that, yes, at some point, the Rickrell Creek Trail System should and will connect to the Highway 99 trail to get between Monmouth Independence and Dallas. I think that will happen over time, but there's a lot of work that has to take place between now and then to make that a reality. So it sounds like there's, you know, two, two different directions here.
I was in the middle of a conversation. Anyway, to keep it quaint, keep the small-town atmosphere, I'm sorry, 12-foot is not something that I would really like to see. So I'm a 10.
It may not be 12 feet now, but a 10 here, it probably needs to be.
I'll say this one more time, and then I'll shut up for good. I think we should build for the future.
How old, how old is El Waco?
I have no clue.
Is it more than 10 years old?
I, I have zero clue. I, again, I, my opinion is, it's more, what, what brings us to not just this trail, we've ridden the bikes all over, in Hawaii and New Orleans and all, it's that I want to go wherever the trail is, and the trail is nice, and there's not holes, and there, I'm not going to, like, lose a tooth trying to drive over the trail, and that it's, it's pretty where I'm going. I'm not a fan of the six and smaller. I, I'm not a fan of the six and smaller because that really does become problematic.
And, and the six and smaller, that's really intended for like short, one-block segments where you have like a cul-de-sac that then has a walkway that continues through to the next street. It's not really, and the accessways aren't really intended to be major through routes.
And so this is, what, 20% more? Going from 10 to 12, there's 20% more?
I mean, if, if your big concern is the aesthetics along the trail, you could also say, hey, it needs to be a 30-foot right-of-way with landscaping. Like, there's other ways to get to the idea of the aesthetics.
Yeah, so, just, I'm conscious of time and this is our first of two items. So, and you're not making a decision tonight. So, that's important to remember. We're just having a good discussion. Sounds like we're, we're between 10 feet and 12 feet. What staff can do is to bring this topic back, you know, to the, the public hearing. When we continue that, we'll, we'll keep our language as it's proposed today. And then, when you get to the, you know, public hearing, you can, and the deliberations on the hearing, you can have, continue this discussion and motion to vote and figure out whether it's 10 or 12. But I think we're at the point of 10 to 12. Unless there's more discussion.
Just please include. I'll call Salem.
If we can include a map of what's 10-foot and what's 12-foot.
Yeah, when we bring it back for the public hearing, we'll make a note to include a map of the existing trail and the segments that are 10 feet versus 12 feet.
Can do.
Yes, and we'll also, we'll also show the undeveloped portions. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, next up on the list for discussion is walkways. So, these specifically are private walkways that exist within developments. That's not the right area. Okay. My slides are out of order, I'm sorry. So, these are walkways that are within developments, serving commercial buildings, serving apartment complexes. So, these are not like on-street sidewalks. These are actually, sidewalks, walkways are on, inside the developments. And so there's kind of three key changes that we're, we're looking at making. The first is making the width of walkways consistent. Currently, depending on what your development it is, where on the development site the, the walkway is proposed, there's a variety of different standards of width that apply. Alternately, it's four feet, five feet, six feet. Kind of depends. And so having a diverse set of numbers like that is difficult to communicate to applicants and somewhat difficult to administer. So, having a uniform numerical standard for, for walkways at six feet is one thing that we're, we're proposing as part of these changes. Going, I guess, backwards. So, another section that we have, again, we're trying to get to that point of having language that is clear and objective. And so, safety, for example, is a word that is not clear. It's not objective. What does that mean? So, attempting to add some language around what constitutes, you know, potentially a safety hazard such as standing water or, you know, overhead, you know, obstructions.
Or something that would break Kristen's tooth.
Yes, we don't want that. So, yes, trying to add some language of what is safety? You know, there's, there's that. And then, finally, adding some language on where on-site the walkways are required, exceptions to that, and then when those exceptions would apply. Right now, it says that the, the walkways all have to connect to the extent practicable. Well, what is the definition of practicable? Who decides that? You know, it says topographic constraints may be, you know, cause. Well, is it a cause or is it not a cause? May is not clear, right? So, adding some additional language to specify that the walkways are required, except when you have steep slopes or wetlands or natural drainage ways greater than a certain size. In this case, 40 feet was the number. And the cost of overcoming those topographical constraints, whether it's ramps, stairs, boardwalks, bridges, whatever, would exceed a certain cost value. Here, we've taken one-half of 1% of the project cost as that threshold. That's the same number that we use for pedestrian amenities in the commercial zone section of our code, the civic space section. Whether that's the correct percentage number or not is a separate question that you could have. I'll note that the Americans with Disabilities Act, when you're doing remodels and upgrades to, you know, developments, adding accessibility features, that the threshold for practicality on that is 25% of your project cost. So, you know, if you think of, you know, the cost of adding elevators to existing buildings, those sorts of things, for ADA purposes, 25% is what's practicable. So, we've pulled one-half of 1% here. Is that the right number? That's a policy decision that you guys can certainly mull over, but there you go. So, if there's questions, certainly happy to entertain questions that you may have. Help to provide clarity, yes.
So, is this the walkways, are they for like public? I mean, like residential, like sidewalks? And say, I don't know, like at a, like at a college or something, how the, you know, walkways?
Right, yes. So, this would be essentially any, any walkway that's on a, on a development site. So, it's, you know, the walkway that goes from the front door of grocery outlet out to the street. It's the, the walkway in the apartment complex that connects from the street to the apartments. Right. So, it's, it's the sidewalk walkways that are, that are on the development sites. Yep.
So, it's not the public street sidewalk?
But not the public.
Not the public street sidewalk. It's internal sidewalks.
Yes.
I've got a question about something on that slide. The green part down the lower left. A walkway connection shall not be required across slopes exceeding 50%. 50% is an awfully darned steep slope. Wouldn't you, wouldn't you want stairs there rather than a walkway if something was that? What I'm getting at is, is 50%, maybe two pick a number, ought maybe it be something more restricted, less than 50? Because that's pretty bloody steep.
But it would also be shallow enough where you could put a stairway.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking. That's what you'd want to do in that case. Well, or, for the purposes of what we're doing here, would a stairway be considered a walkway?
It could, yes.
Okay, so you could, so a stairway could satisfy this?
Right.
That's why I think.
Fine.
So, the, that's the thing about, you know, the ADA is that not every part of a development necessarily has to be ADA accessible. So, this could potentially apply in areas where you wouldn't need ADA access, say to a parking lot in a lower part of a development if your ADA parking is in the upper part, for example. So, there's, there's different places where ADA thresholds may not apply, but we would still want to have pedestrian access.
Just since I'm familiar with the project, the project that we're doing, the apartment building? That would take the six-foot sidewalk between the two, the building, the sidewalk between the two buildings to six feet wide and all the sidewalks around the parks to six feet wide?
Were there sidewalks around those parks?
There's sidewalks inside the park. It goes down over, but with that, I'm just.
Right, yeah. The idea is that it's essentially any, any walkway that's, that's part of the development.
Basically, anything that's not on the street.
Right. I mean, there could conceivably be like, you know, maintenance access areas that maybe have a less standard, they're not really intended for use by the public. But the idea is that, you know, six-foot is kind of your, your uniform standard.
Well, and as Lane pointed out, in a different context, there's always the variance process.
Yes, of course.
Does the variance process always come back through the city council?
No, variances go to planning commission.
Okay, okay.
And if somebody doesn't like it, the planning commission decides then it comes to us.
Okay, but it doesn't, okay.
And it only goes to planning commission if it's over 20%?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We actually have three different variance processes. So, yes, this would probably be a major variance because it's not one of the other specified variances. But that could also be something that we could pursue is.
Are there any variances that are not, don't have to be type 3?
Yes. Your, your type 2 adjustments are technically like a minor variance. And then your class A variances are also an administrative decision.
So, Chase, from my own knowledge, because I, I should know this, but I don't. Or maybe I didn't, I forgot it. It's, does this only apply to commercial and multifamily developments? Or what about a single-family house? Did the, like a walkway from the front door to the sidewalk, does that have to be six feet?
Right, so the, the very beginning preamble of this entire chapter is that it does not apply to single-family homes, only to developments as a whole. So, if you were doing, say, a cottage cluster development, then it would apply to that because that's all one single development. But individual, single-family homes would not be subject to this.
If the city were building a brand-new park, would this apply in the park?
I'd have to look into that. I would imagine.
Intuitively, I would kind of think that it would.
Although, I wouldn't think.
I thought I posed the question.
I don't know that we really have any new walkways that we've built that are less than six feet, though.
Duplex would not qualify or do?
Sorry, one and two-family dwellings, yes. Multifamily in our code is classified as three dwellings or more, so.
So, like, would we require, so, under House Bill 3395, to be obvious, no. This would, this is a development code provision?
Yes.
Not a provision subject under House Bill 3395. Under House Bill 3395, you have to allow transportation access to and from commercial and medical centers. And so, whatever the council feels is adequate transportation for that standard is what has to be met, not these development code requirements.
Can you say that again?
Yeah.
You lost me.
So, House Bill 3395 says that you have to have adequate transportation from the site to medical and commercial areas.
Okay.
So, whatever the council determines is adequate is what applies under House Bill 3395.
So, we could say that this is adequate?
Correct.
Okay.
But this standard is not the standard that applies because it's not a land-use decision.
And, and 3395, an application of the 3395 supersedes.
That's the word I was looking at.
So, what, what you would decide is, you know, if a site that you're considering under House Bill 3395 did not have adequate transportation facilities currently built, you would decide through that public hearing process what adequate transportation facilities would look like and require that as a condition of approval under House Bill 3395.
Sorry, but when you say transportation facilities.
Like sidewalk, sidewalks, streets? Walkways, buses, you know, transit, whatever.
Facilities, in this case, being synonymous with infrastructure. So, think of transportation infrastructure.
But not just streets? Because I just think of streets and sidewalks.
Yep.
On the property too?
Could be, could be onsite, offsite, yeah. There are, there are certain requirements. You know, building, the, under the 3395 building code has to be met. So, there's ADA requirements for walkways between ADA parking spaces, you know, onsite and all public entrances or entrances to, you know, their buildings and stuff like that. So, there's things like that that would be required under, an application for House Bill 3395 in the city of Dallas. But again, as it relates to this code, House Bill 3395, the development code doesn't apply. You just have to make decisions based under those criteria. So, this would apply to, again, multifamily, commercial developments inside the city of Dallas. I think it applies to parks, Chase, but we can confirm that at the public hearing.
Well, and I, I think it'd be unlikely that the Parks Department would want a trail that's less than.
I agree with that, but I think that we can, we can confirm.
We can clarify that.
How this applies. This is the last one we're talking about.
And you did say we have to obey our own rules.
Well, and since we have to obey our own rules when it was brought up, because I was kind of not going to bring it up, but we're taking out the word reasonably direct and making it direct. I know I was going to avoid this. But if we have to apply our own rules, are we shooting ourselves in the foot in our parks and having to have direct paths instead of meandering direct paths? Because a meandering direct path is reasonably direct where it can be very aesthetic, have nice curves instead of straight lines. And I, to me, direct means a straight line. Even though you're seeing a 40, that stairway, it looks like it might be 45 this way and that way. Is that, can we?
Lane, what about that? Does direct mean straight or is there more wiggle room?
So, right, so direct is a route that does not deviate unnecessarily from a straight line or a route that does not involve significant amount of out-of-direction travel for users. It's kind of the way that that's, that's written.
Is this a catch-22? Because if we, if we just say direct, then we've got this issue we're talking about now. And if we leave reasonably direct in there, then are we in trouble with state law because we're not being specific enough?
I, I would also point out that the requirement for safe, direct, and convenient paths is walkways within developments shall provide safe, reasonably direct, and convenient connections between primary building entrances and all adjacent streets based on the following definitions. So, do our parks have primary building entrances?
Some of them do.
Most of them don't.
Yeah, so I would, I would say that if you want to address the parks issue, number one, we need to determine if this applies to parks, so we can do that. And this might be a topic that'll be a subtopic of the session. But does it relate, does it relate to parks? If it does, I think that you could include a clear and objective standard that says, you know, notwithstanding whatever section, you know, in, you know, city parks or private parks, shall have meandering pass or, you know, allowed meandering pass. You can come up with language that would.
Yeah, we can talk about this. Another one comes to mind is basically making a developer option if they want. And not that we would require, I don't want to make this up, but I think we have a couple ways we can come at this.
Either one of those would solve the problem.
Yeah, it's, it's a great point, my, Councilor Schilling. And we'll, we'll come back. It's a kind of a subtopic of this.
So, reasonably direct would shoot roundabouts?
Walkways not driving surfaces.
You've been in transportation too long.
There's not a lot of walking roundabouts.
Well, maybe there should be. People want to go 25 on their bikes. I was nice.
That was, that was the extent of the, the presentation that we have for you, so. Sounds like there's been a lot of thoughts here. And so hopefully, whoever's taking the minutes got those because I'm obviously not taking notes as I'm.
It's recorded, Chase.
Brilliant.
I just have clarification on page, bottom of page five. We were talking about the residential, and it does say something about residential, commercial, six feet. Is that, am I reading something wrong?
Right, so, the, the section where it talks about that, we've got the strikeout there in the, in the red. Currently, the standard is four feet in residential projects and six feet in commercial projects or, or all, all other projects is what it says. So, we're, we're striking that language to make it just six feet wide across all projects.
Clarify that this is multifamily residential, not residential, single-family.
Correct, yes.
That's in the preamble, yes.
Yes, because it's the preamble under, under section A, site layout and design.
That was Mike's question.
Yeah, it's all developments except single-family and duplex dwellings. Yeah. Yes, if it's adjacent to a building, it's a five-foot sidewalk, yes. So, that's why having a uniform standard is easier to communicate.
Any other questions?
That's why our resistance thing.
I know.
Okay, I will adjourn the work session.
I wish to call the Dallas City Council meeting in order for September 18th, 2023. There's a message I'm going to read before we start the meeting. There's been discussion recently in the news and social media regarding the potential development of a homeless shelter on property in Dallas by church at the park. A development that could be under consideration would require a conditional use permit to allow the shelter to be located in the industrial zone. The conditional use permit application if filed would be addressed through the land use process which includes opportunities for public comment and testimony and public hearings that would be held for that purpose. And all public comment and testimony concerning the project must be presented at those land use hearings. The city council will not receive public comment on the subject of the proposed project at this council meeting. Public comment on homelessness in general will be received, but comments on this particular project that may be the subject of the land use application must be reserved for public hearings on any application that may be filed. So Secretary, please call the role.
Council President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jants?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselors Bariantus and Burden Arxus.
My two leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Introductions, recognitions, proclamations?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Next is public comments. I'll read you the rules, and the rules we will follow for public comment. Please provide us with your name and address for the record. Give it up for three minutes. It's your turn to talk, and ours to listen. Please direct all comments to the mayor. The mayor will refer to staff with readily available information if the follow-up is needed. The commentary or my values comments will not be accepted. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time, being respected. The first one I've got is Ann Heard.
I guess you are. Ann Heard, 62 South West Taylor Street. Ann Heard talked about mainly the, yeah, the pool, all about pool. We're having our meeting next week on the 26th, and it'll be our first one since May. And we've invited Alter Media, a marketing firm, to come and sit in on that meeting with us because we want some ideas on how to increase our donor contributions for this coming year. They're only 10% of what they did on other years. So we're really going to work on that. And there's been a major leak at the pool. The lap pool was shut down for a couple of weeks because at least in two places, they found one where the pool itself leaked, and the other was in a pipe made in face in concrete. But the lift is finally going to be put in from the therapy pool, but Grace Saturday, a year and a half ago, gave us $2,000 to put in, and we threw in the other $2,000 that was going to be needed. Anyway, they have a four by four by four hole right next to the therapy pool that critical concrete are going to be the base of this new lift that'll be very secure. And that's going in Thursday, and they're bringing a lift, you know, to go up high because apparently this pipe is in the ceiling. So it'll be a big day at the pool on Thursday. But it'll be really nice to get that in. I've got a paralyzed woman across the street, really good friend, who's just been applying to get a new pool, but now she'll be able to. Hopefully, they'll get it in Thursday, and it'll be all set up, ready to go next week. So she's really excited about that, and I'm sure other people will be too. Now, I want to take a couple of banners. We have some neat banners. One is a four by four from Agape Physical Therapy. It's out in, like, Ellendale, I think in Plazem, up there. Daniel Walker and his wife, one of really, really nice people. He's security somewhere, somewhere around here, but anyway, they're great people. And Astentec has finally stocked their banner together, and Service Graphics has worked very deeply with them because it's a very unique banner. It's a two by eight with a dark background, and it says AE Astentec Engineering, Engineering, We Engineer Solutions underneath that. But in the back of that, in the back of the lettering, is a black watermark of a Dallas dragon.
Oh, nice.
He went to high school here, and that'd be great if he just got bars. So they're printing that now. We finally got a preview of that last week, so that'll be a little bit of cool mess. And then, don't tell me about the water, because then we're going to have a little contest. Do you even find the dragon amongst the banners? And we'll pick one of the winners here to do some swim passes. So we're really excited about next year and having a lift and getting more banners. You know, we kind of only have a space, but yeah, we're ready to keep on going. So come see us whenever you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
I don't have any other cards. Is there anybody on the telephone? Next item is consent agenda, and that agenda item is approved on September 5th, 2023 City Council Work Session Minutes, approved September 5th, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes, and the August 2023 Plan Act. Any walk to the drawing room, please. It's not an entertaining move.
Nice to move.
Second.
Move in second, any more discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, or denied. Reports or comments from the mayor and council members.
I just have a comment.
You're the guy.
There was a previous, in previous minutes, there it was mentioned that, so in a previous council meeting, I mentioned that there were community members that had questioned whether or not we purchased vehicles for the mayor, councilors, or city staff. And the minutes reflected that question, and somehow, community members mistook that for me asking for a vehicle. And I just, I didn't get any, I didn't even get a Tonka truck. So I just want to make it clear that at no point in time did I request a vehicle.
Is that bicycle used in Washington? Did you pay for that?
I paid for, actually, I didn't. It was a gift from my partner. So I just want to make it clear that at no point in time did I request a vehicle from the city, receive a vehicle from the city. So I just want to make that very clear and make sure that that made it into the minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to report that I was very privileged to participate in the local office for the fire chief.
Yes.
And attended the fire department's dinner, very good dinner. There was only two counselors there, as of this point, and we didn't have more support. We got two counselors there, and it was very good, and now she's on the job.
Just in the interest of full disclosure, I had an unbreakable conflict, and I knew I wasn't going to be there, so I stopped into her office the day before, congratulated her personally.
In the interest of full disclosure, Gary and I were getting our butts kicked at a public meeting where we got asked every hard question on the planet. It was a, it was a good meeting, but boy, howdy.
You didn't come to comment like that.
We did, oh, was that a good one, too? Yeah. We are very happy.
The table from my meeting is perfect. The only people watching were first staff members. So we got an absolute.
Okay, reports from the city manager and staff.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the first item is on page 37 of your agenda. It's the Parks Advisory Board appointments. We had a couple of applications for the Parks Advisory Board.
Is that how many open spots there were, too?
Yes, there were two open positions, and so there's a recommended motion. The applications are included in the packet that starts on page 36, I believe. And so, or actually, 38. So the recommended motions on the bottom of page 37, and it's to appoint Trevor Peterson to the Parks Advisory Board with the term expiring on December of this year, and then Kayla Silverman to the Parks Advisory Board with the term expiring December 31st of 2025.
And staff is recommending both of these?
The mayor recommends appointments to this board, and he's recommended both of these.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, or denied.
All right, and the second item of discussion is the item that was referred to this agenda by Counselor Adams at the last meeting, and that is the Jasper and Denton Allway Stop Intersection Improvement, page 42 of your packet. Not going to go over everything here in the report. We've had this, this discussion previously. We had a resident who submitted some public comments, provided some additional written testimony and arguments for why they feel that that roadway is unsafe, requested a stop sign be installed to make the intersection of Jasper and Denton a four-way stop. Staff provided information, some of that information's included in the packet here. Staff's recommendation is that Denton Street operates as a minor collector. That's the function, that's the classification, and a stop sign at Denton to stop that traffic is not necessary. So that's staff's opinion, and our, our recommendation is to do nothing. But because there was a direction from the counselor to, to have a stop sign at that intersection, there's, there is a motion at the bottom of the staff report, and in fact, you had an extra page included, because our city attorney pointed out, and I missed that it's, if you want to create a stop sign to make it a four-way stop, has to be done by resolution. So the motion on your page here would be to direct the city attorney to prepare a resolution directing city staff to install stop signs at Northwest Denton Avenue and Northwest Transfer Street to create an all-way stop intersection, so.
So to be clear, if we, if we pass this recommended motion, we're not voting to build a stop sign, we're voting to have a resolution come back to us, so we can debate whether to do it.
Correct.
In that case, I'm in favor of this motion. In fact, we'll make the motion.
You make the decision.
You make the decision tonight. Resolution usually, what you have to do with a big noun and the resolution block, that will make it.
Just to implement, implement a decision.
So I would say that you should, you need a big noun if there is a need.
Well, let's get the resolution on the floor so we can discuss it, then I'll, I'll move the, the motion if somebody wants a second.
I'll second.
Move to second, then noun discussion. Anybody want to discuss it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start since I did, since I made the motion. Notwithstanding the fact that we have a clear difference of opinion as to how safe or unsafe this is, if we build it, there, there is some safety impact, maybe not as much as the residents think there is, but there will be some, and it'll also create an impression that we're listening to them. So I see very little downside here and some potential upside. I think it's worth doing just for those reasons.
I'm not saying I won't build it, but I will put double back there as far as you think. By placing a stop sign on this, you are creating a slowdown in traffic in that area and moving traffic.
To another area, which we have to alleviate.
That would be the Lyle intersection. You want to have more traffic coming to that. And just that's the double back there. Really, the stop sign already on the street.
Yeah, it's just a two-way rather than the four-way.
So part of the reason for that street on the transportation system plan is it's a collector.
It feeds traffic from one area of the city to another area.
If you put a stop sign on that street, the traffic that is now bypassing that person is going to go back to Lyle, Lyle, Ellendale, at Lyle.
Isn't that what it's intended to? I'm just, I, I want you to understand what you're voting on. Well, let's go, let's run with that for a moment. Do we have any metrics of which, of what the effects would be?
So, no, we've not done like a traffic study to be able to determine, you know, what driving behaviors would be if there's a stop sign at that intersection. What I will say is Denton is a minor collector from Orchard all the way to Douglas, and it's proposed to be continued all the way to James Howe Road. So eventually, it will be. Right now, there are stop signs at Douglas, Hillcrest, and Orchard. And so you'd be introducing a fourth stop sign. And so right now, vehicles currently stop at Hillcrest and then begin their, their progress eastward, or they're stopping at Orchard or coming off of Orchard onto Denton. And so you're able to gain speed, so if someone wants to speed, they certainly can on Denton between Orchard and Hillcrest, or from Hillcrest to Orchard, in either direction. The two speed studies that'll be provided demonstrated that you don't have a real speeding issue there. I'm sure there are people that do exceed the speed limit, but your average speed, 87th, the 85th percentile speed for both speed studies, which took in over 11,000 vehicles, I think it was closer to 16,000 between the two speed studies, and you had an average speed of the 85th percentile of 27 miles per hour. So you're not, you're not seeing a, a critical mass of cars exceeding the speed limit where it's a real safety concern. So Michael's point is that if you create more stops along that collector street, you're going to turn it more into the functional classification of what a local street is, where you have stop signs at pretty much every intersection, and people will find alternate routes because it's not the collector that it was designed to be. And so that's the, the struggle with introducing additional stop signs is that you're, you're taking away its, its classification and its function by, you know, adding more stops than what it's designed to have.
That's why I was asking about metrics, because to the extent that you shift traffic off of, you know, back onto Ellendale again, then you're creating more congestion at Ellendale, which means you now have a distant, more of a distance than at Ellendale, et cetera, et cetera. That's why I was asking about that. Basically, because I was trying to give a handle on whether we were talking about this much effect or this.
I would say that the, the connection of Denton all the way to Hillcrest, where it didn't connect before, improved the intersection at Ellendale and Levens because people from the neighborhood between Douglas and Hillcrest no longer had to go down either Douglas or Hillcrest to access that intersection. So that improvement has, has made, the connection on Denton has improved the intersection at Lyle, at Lyle Elementary School because you're not taking all of that traffic down to Ellendale. They're able to get over to Orchard or to Jasper through Denton. And so certainly, you've seen an increase in traffic volume, there's no, no doubting that, the neighbors are experiencing that, and I think that's one of their concerns is, because we have a lot more cars than we might here. By the way, they're going fast, but we were able to demonstrate that they're not going fast. There's, there are a lot more cars, that is a true statement. And by, by introducing an additional stop sign, you may reduce some of those cars that go there because they're like, boy, this is no faster than the way I used to go, I'm going to go the other way.
Well, I think it still would be faster because it's, even if you're, even, even, you know, positive thing that you have a stop sign, the particular blocks we're talking about, they're, they're long, quite, quite long. So it's not like, you know, it's not like, for example, going east to west across town off Place Street where there's a stop sign that seems like every, almost every corner. It wouldn't be like that because even though there are a lot of stop signs, there would be if we did. The number of intersections there are, those are really far. So that's why I'm wondering, you know, is it this much effect or is it going to be this much effect?
Isn't Ellendale, Ellendale for a stop sign?
Yes.
Yeah, well.
And that'll, and that'll make a better improvement for that intersection, especially as the development around James Howe Road gets completed.
And it may also, and that may also push more traffic over onto Denton because those people prefer stop sign to a light if the traffic gets in in a hurry.
Yeah, it could, you know, when that extension's made all the way over there, that's at least a few years away.
It's a very gray area. We don't really have a good.
Yeah, so there's, there's not, a, a stop sign there is not going to, I would not say that it would completely disrupt all the traffic patterns. You will have some impact because there will be people that'll be like, hey, I have to go through two stop signs this way, and only one if I go down Hillcrest, right, or two. You know, it's, it's hard to say how people are going to, to take it.
It is.
Well, that, well, putting a four-way stop and transfer due to the traffic plan.
Is there a word or two there?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the transportation system plan.
Thank you, that's not.
Other than, you know, a collector like Michael described is to have kind of a free-flow movement, collecting the traffic from neighborhood streets onto a collector street to funnel more cars, you know, down that road. By introducing additional stop signs, right, already between Douglas and Orchard, you have Hillcrest, now you'd be adding Denton or Jasper, so you're adding another stop sign. It just causes people to go, takes longer, doesn't cause them to go slower or faster necessarily, but it takes them longer to get from point A to point B.
And what is the cost of a four-way stop?
We'll buy two stop signs, it won't be significant.
There's already, there's already two there, so we're, we're buying two additional, we're buying two additional stop signs.
Okay.
It's not a significant cost. Just a decision.
One last perspective, and then I'll shut up about it. When we say collector, and you know, the principle collector is to keep traffic moving, obviously flowing, but there are already stop signs on that street, so all of this is relative because it's not a straight shot from one end to the other. Now, you have to stop a couple of places already, so we're adding one more to what's already there. So I think that's part, should be part of the perspective, too.
Yeah, and that, and that's correct. And so, and I would say the, the analysis probably at the time, and I wasn't here when it happened, but to have a stop sign at Hillcrest is because it used to dead-end into, Denton used to dead-end into Hillcrest, and so you had a stop sign there with a dead-end, right? Hillcrest is also a hill going down, and so keeping that traffic going as opposed to Denton, which is a little bit more flat going into that intersection, is a little bit of a, a slope, but it's not a lot. So I think that's why the stop sign is there, is just the history of how that was built out. In the future, as Denton gets all of it completed, maybe it makes sense to reevaluate and open up the stop signs that are currently there to not have them, so you have more of a free-flow movement on Denton. That's future considerations.
Better bring out the coaches and pitch boards.
Especially if you allow more stop signs now.
Well, that's true, that's true.
So as the one who put the motion forward, I still feel that it's important for those, the four-way stop again as the school's starting. If you had to watch these kids, the buses stop, that's another main intersectioning pickup area, and getting on and off and watching these kids log up to the edge of the bus, look around the corner because they don't trust that the cars have stopped behind the bus as they should. I, I just, I think it keeps begging for a problem, and if this, I, I still think that stopping the traffic is not going to overload what its journey is supposed to be, what it's been designed for. I just think we need to give all of those, because all of those houses that sit around that four, that four-way stop area are children, lots of kids, will them, people walking to mailboxes. So anyway, that's why I had introduced it, and I would like to see it move forward.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of asking the city attorney to approve a resolution, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or denied. Next on, you don't have anything else?
Nope, that's all from our reports.
Next is resolution, resolution 3515.
All right, this is a resolution amending the Washington Streetscape Project under the Dallas Development Dallas Downtown Urban Renewal Plan.
We've heard the reading of this resolution. Okay, Secretary, we'll call the role, please.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jants?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Pass 7-0.
Resolution number 3515 is passed by the number four. Resolution 3516.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 3516 is a resolution supporting an application for a technical assistance TA grant to fund audit, code assessment, and potential rezoning to meet the Oregon statewide planning goal nine and goal 10 requirements of the master plan for the lock rail node.
We've heard the reading of this resolution. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Secretary, please call the role.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jants?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
We've heard resolution number 3516 is passed by the number four. Any other business?